Alright, everybody, we're on.
Is Nancy? I know she said she wasn't wearing November, so she's traveling. Is this her trip?
I think so.
I thought she said October.
Oh, it was October?
Yeah, I thought she said she was gonna have something in the October.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:31. So our first agenda item tonight is to approve the agenda. So do we have any changes, additions, anything for the agenda to change on the agenda?
I have to request an addition.
Yeah, no problem.
I'd like to request an addition onto the agenda. I'm gonna ask the board to waive the quote and bid policy for some work we need on the boiler.
Okay, so. Maybe after energy audit? Okay. This is the quote in the bid for the boiler?
Yes.
Anything else, any other changes to the agenda? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. A motion from Denise.
Second.
I have a second from Ed, so all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so the agenda is approved. Our first agenda item tonight is public participation. We do have some public with us in person and I know joining us online. So just a quick reminder, if you are offering public comment during this time, please state your name and your address before you begin your comments, so that we have those in the record. That's true for both folks here in the room and folks joining us virtually. You can just have your name, post your name and your address, and those will be read into the record. And for comments, the board's job during this time is really to just listen. If there are things that we can, questions we can address easily during the public participation, we will do that as appropriate. But if there are, if there's further conversation, that'll happen later on in the agenda. So we'll leave the public participation open for a few minutes here and see if we have anybody.
Just for anybody who's at home, the chat was closed. I just opened it. If you were trying to use the chat, it should be all set now.
See anything coming in the chat or online? Don't have anyone speaking in person. So we will go ahead and close public participation. And our first agenda item is our student school board liaison. I think we have Ellen with us.
We do. Ellen, I'm gonna move you over as a panelist.
Hi.
Hi, Ellen.
Alright. So if you wanna just, you are our student school board liaison at this point. And so we'd love to just hear from you about how the beginning of the year is going, if there are any, any big updates or things that you think the board should know about, and just generally, if there's anything, you know, that you'd like to share with us.
Yeah, beginning of the school year's been going great. We just had homecoming, so like the bonfire and football game with seniors. So it was really fun. We also had our first homecoming dance in a really long time. Not sure how long, but I've never been in school when there's been a homecoming dance, and it was all of the grades, so it was like freshman, sophomore, junior, senior. It was in the gym, and it was a considerable amount cheaper than prom, which was nice, it was very accessible. It was really fun. And I, the clubs have been starting up again, and people from outside the school have been allowed in, so that's been good for like the science ELO I'm doing. So people from NHS, which is like a science academy, can come into the school now and help us. So that's good. And yeah, it's been going great.
Excellent. Any questions from the board?
Alright. Have you spread the word about getting another student school board liaison from the high school, another Grantham student?
I was actually just gonna ask about that. I'm a senior, so I'm graduating, and there will need to be a new one. And maybe it would be nice to have one now, maybe like a freshman. I could ask Bonnie Robinson if she could put something in the newsletter that can add about it.
Would be great, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We would appreciate it.
I'm not sure about the middle school.
I reached out to the middle school principal, so she's putting something out. But if you could spread the word in the high school, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'll definitely do that.
Are there things that you noticed that are happening at the school that are still, like, that you would say are still under kind of the umbrella of like differences in COVID? So like, are there still things, either things happening in classrooms or in activities? Like, is there anything that you're still noticing that is a difference from before COVID to now?
I think the only thing that's different is kind of external activities and what other institutions have maybe changed. Like, including opportunities at Dartmouth have been really scarce. Like, you used to be able to take classes at Dartmouth as like a junior and a senior, and that was like a really good opportunity for people. You can't do that anymore, which is sad. It's kind of just been cut off. So that's the only really change that I've seen.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
You look happy.
Alright, thank you. Hopefully, we're able to see you next month, and maybe we'll have another, someone else interested in joining you, but we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ellen. Good night, Ellen.
Thank you. Bye.
Alright, our next agenda item is the playground bid, and the board has the information for that in our board packet. So this is the request for proposals for the playground project.
So this is, this is it? This is the culmination of a lot of work going into the final RFP. And I do wanna say there are a couple caveats where we're still making just minor tweaks before the bill, the bid goes out on Friday, but it'll be out Friday at noon. And I, we have Emily Owens, who is here, who is our project manager, clerk of works. And Emily, I don't know if you wanna add anything to the discussion, because I know that you spoke to SE group today about some final changes, or are they, if they're minor, I don't think we need to go over them, but is there anything big for the board?
No, they're pretty minor.
Okay. And she also brought like the really big plans. If anybody wants to take a look at the plans, which you can do now or at the end of the meeting, or if you have any questions about the bid itself.
Okay, so questions or discussion for the board for this RFP?
This will go up, you said the bid's on Friday?
Yes.
And then how long is that going to stay open?
So the timeline, it's on the first date. So it, there was site visits on October 18th, but we're allowing companies to request a different time if they can't make it on the 18th. Questions are due on October 24th with responses by November 1st. The submission deadline is November 14th, and the final bid will be awarded at your December 6th board meeting. So it's about two months from now, we will hopefully be securing our contractor.
So would we be making that decision at our December?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that.
And it will also go through the playground committee before that. Also, the playground committee will look at the bids and the companies, et cetera, before it goes to the board level.
Do you expect the playground committee? I think it probably depends on how many we get, but do you think the playground committee will put forward a recommendation?
Or? I think it'll depend on how many we get.
Yeah.
If you'll remember, the last time the playground committee was torn between two and sent you two, and had you decide, so things like that could happen again.
Okay.
Can you clarify, I think you mentioned it in your report, but the piece about the court work, how that factors into this?
Right, so the, we, the board had approved doing the additional design and survey work for the court problem, where we have the runoff at the end of the court, which would basically mean moving the court over, you know, several feet, so that we don't have it right near that corner, which would be part of the playground project, but it's not included in the original playground bid, because we took that out due to keeping the costs down. So what they did was they did what's an add-all, which is an added alternative to the project. So it would be an estimate that the bidders would give for the court plus the parking lot work. So we have to be really clear about the fact that the runoff and the parking lot work would have to be a separate project coming from a separate fund, but there's better economies of scale that if we can do it all at the same time, while the equipment's here and while they're moving the court, if we get the funding, then obviously it's better to have the same contractor do everything. So the benefit of doing the add-all work is to have the bidders give that part of the bid in addition, so that say in March, we get the money, we don't have to go through the whole process again.
Is it worth trying to walk us through some of the, or can you do that?
Through the bid? Emily, do you wanna walk everybody through the plan?
We don't have to give us everything, but just an overview?
You could give it as if a hawk were flying over the playground, you know what they would be?
So I can give you there. Yeah, nice picture, so liberal visitor, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't know if you've seen the next picture. This is what you have right now in the bid package. This is essentially the overall graphic, the important stuff. So. It is a, I've asked, so the only thing that I've asked for is there's a very incredibly busy drawing. This is the most important drawing. It's got all of your specifications for everything, but it's, so I've asked them to break it up. They're gonna turn off a couple layers and print separate drawings, so it's actually legible. I mean, it's very, it's got everything you need on it, but it's very, it's.
Very busy.
Yeah, very busy, and it's hard to focus.
Because it has all those specs.
It has everything, yeah, yes. I mean, it's looking really good. They've tweaked the walk around so that you shouldn't have any obstructed views. You know, you can stand and see the different areas in the playground.
Is this what we're talking about, where it's a pattern?
This portion, so there's actually here, I have a separate drawing for the other, that's it. Yeah.
So there's the edge of the basketball court here.
Okay.
Parking of it. We were talking about moving that back corner where that drew this from.
You know, this should, for the other elevation zone. So this is the demo plan, saying what's going for the night. This is great, which is probably the most important. It's all big issues. So everything in this walkway, that's all wheelchair accessible? Yeah, yeah. Every part of it.
I mean, there's some rise and.
So if you look at, you can actually see the elevation. So there'll be slope, so there's, this is the horribly busy, horribly busy picture again. You can see, so it's easier for me to show you. Definitely you'd be interested in.
Oh, because of, yes, yeah.
So, but these are.
These are further apart, so this is like a very split, slight grade, and this is the big seat, sorry.
No, that's okay. So, and these are actually gonna be your drain, essentially. So you're now, you're adding this. This is existing. You're adding this, and under here is adding as well. So there's gonna be substantial ways to catch the water. And it's also gonna be sloped to actually head towards the actual.
Yeah.
Places it's supposed to. And should make it more accessible in the winter. Yeah, safer, much worse, yes.
Where are they, where are they pushing the water to?
So ultimately here.
Is it, is it a culvert or something out there?
Technically, it's a culvert that runs under. Yeah.
So some people have been asking me about, you know, the pavilion, why is the pavilion like a platform? But to build the pavilion with our existing playground now, it has to be at a specific elevation to match the rest of the drainage plan for when the rest of the playground is built. So that has to be higher, which goes to the rest of the drainage plan in the future. So everything starts to drain the way that it's supposed to be, since drainage is our main focus.
And it's right around here?
The pavilion?
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
Exciting to see.
It has bringing trucks.
Now, can you understand all this?
Yeah.
I continue to write grants to try and get things like the court work, and I submitted a grant to Muskoma Foundation last week. You know, and I'll just keep doing that to see if we can, you know, we won't know anything until the bids come in, but I'll see if I can continue to get funding to take care of as much of a project as we can.
Any other questions or discussions about the playground bid?
It's been vetted and approved by both our bond council and Primax. So that should give you some good feelings in approving it.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the request for proposal for construction services for Grantham Village School grounds and playground renovation. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Alright.
It's very exciting.
It is exciting! Alright, so our next agenda item is the energy audit. And so we have a memo in the board packet, and then I think some additional information for us.
Yeah, so, and I'd like to introduce TJ Alexander, who's here from the Grantham Energy Committee. So thank you for coming. We met, I think it was in August, when I went to the energy committee, and they had talked to the town about completing an energy audit, which is a little bit different than the initial approach the board was taking in terms of looking at a really comprehensive, a comprehensive plan for services, which was the original thing that was going out. And I believe that was honestly January of 2020, when you were starting to look at that. So the energy committee is proposing that the town and school, and the town did complete it, but the proposing that the school completes an energy audit, which are usually for free and done through, it's the seeds organization, so it's like leads, but seeds for schools. And they would basically just be giving us a preliminary look at some of the apparent and easy, maybe ready, ready fixes that we can go for without having to do the full comprehensive plan. So TJ, I don't know if you wanna add anything else to this about your, your interest in having the school do the energy audit?
Well, you are correct that, that I was asked to look at the performance contracting document that was prepared in 2019. And I found it very technical and probably difficult to have anybody bid on. But it included all the town buildings. It included all kinds of items for a performance contractor. It was kind, it was kind of more appropriate, I think, for a large city or school district. You know, Manchester, I'm sure could get somebody to respond to this kind of proposal. But for a small little, small little town like, like we have here, I kinda doubt it. I'm not saying that you, if you think you should, you wanna put it out, be my guest and give it a shot. But one of the recommendations that the, that the Department of Energy had is you start with a very simple energy audit, of which we are doing for other town buildings. You actually missed the window for this year, but there's always another year, and EverSource covers those as part of public monies that they have. They have a certain percent, I don't know, 1% or 1.5% of the monies that they collect that they have to use for, quote, public good. And that's one of the things that they do. So we do have energy audits lined up for the town offices. The libraries already, already had energy audits in the last couple of years. Probably the fire station, town offices, and some of the other ancillary buildings across the street are gonna be looked at here coming up this winter, fall. We also did a simple walkthrough of this building here. The committee walked around just so that we got an idea of what the building was like in the school. You know, offered some basic suggestions, nothing formal, nothing major. But there, you know, just suggestions on things that could be done. Looked like, looked to me like there were a couple of roof issues that probably could be, should be taken care of. So that was just an informal little walk around with Toby. Questions? Energy-wise, everything's gone up this year. Everybody's gonna get slapped.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I thought this would, since we're talking about this, I thought this would be a good time to give the board an overview of our energy this year, because this is around when we do our purchasing. And then we start talking about during a budget season. So we were, as usual, we are part of a school district consortium. We do a group purchasing for our energy. So for electricity, we wound up with a 16.45 cent per kilowatt hour, which with our three to four a month rebate for using hydro, we do that for about three to four months. For those three or four months, it'll bring our rate to about 15.95. The going rate elsewhere for EverSource has been about 22, 23 cents. So we locked that in, so we're pretty happy about that at this point. And then for fuel, we wound up going with, we have propane for Irving. We wound up going with, we, you know, went out and looked at all the different prices for Ryans and Goodrich, et cetera, and we wound up going with Irvin, and we got locked in at 1.573 per gallon. So, and that's not bad either. So, you know, we were, we were savvy shoppers this year, and we were able to lock in some really good rates for energy this year before everything started to skyrocket.
Okay, other questions from the board for the, um, looking at this energy audit proposal?
I do, I do wanna clarify, one thing is, we didn't, the, the window you're talking about for the energy audit is for municipal buildings, so there are still some that are available for schools. So if you do wanna do this, I don't think we have to wait for the full next municipal window to open again, if you choose to do one.
And what's the turnaround time once?
I have no idea. Do you have any idea?
The turnaround time from audit to report?
Yeah.
Typically, it's a month.
And how about securing the audit as a difficult to get, succumb in a timely manner, or?
Gonna have to, tell me again. Louder.
Oh, what's the scheduling for the audits? Are they available or?
No.
No.
No, they're filled up for the year. And it would have to be in '23, probably a year from now.
Maintenance availability for school.
For schools.
A different availability for schools.
If you have, if you have a window for some other, other options there, and somebody, you know, if you can get, get another, who's, who are you talking about that would do it?
Seeds.
Seeds. Well, that's who's doing the town.
Right, but the town and the school windows are different, according to Margaret, who we were above working with.
Well, if you can, if you can get her moved, moved in there, by all means. I hadn't had any conversation with her in doing that for the school. And that would be, that, that is the basic level-one energy audit that, you know, is recommended. And she is the one that EverSource, her company is the one that EverSource uses for municipalities.
And that's a no cost.
Yeah, I, yeah, I wouldn't recommend doing a, I wouldn't recommend paying for an audit. There are enough free ones that are out there. I think you just have to take it with a grain of salt when you get the report, because you're getting an energy audit from an energy company.
Right.
Right, so you wanna just, we'll just have to look at what they say before you make any decisions about whether you wanna take any action.
Yeah. Any other discussion from the board? So we would need a motion to, to approve the energy audit? Is that what?
To. You would say to schedule an energy audit?
Schedule an energy audit.
A level-one energy audit.
So you need a motion, a motion to schedule a level-one energy audit?
So.
I have a motion from Nancy and a second from Leslie. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Alright, so our next agenda item is the quote and bid, waiving the quote and bid process for necessarily, necessary boiler work.
Yeah, so we're, we have two boilers, and we're having trouble with one, and we've had trouble with it for quite a few years. The people who came out to take a look at it recently, I do not know the specifics about this with the boiler, but it has pinholes in the front of the furnace, which is not good. And Toby has been reaching out to different companies to try and get repair and replacement, et cetera. It looks like to replace the section that we need to replace, it's gonna be about $7,500. It's not going to be a cheap fix, but we wanna do the right fix. And this boiler really has been giving us trouble for many years. He has been shopping around and calling around. It, I don't believe that it will do any good for us to try and get three quotes for this, because we can't even get anybody except this one company to come look at it.
Yep.
So I'm gonna request from the board that you allow us to waive the three-quote requirement to be able to go ahead and move forward with the boiler before it gets colder.
Yeah. I support that. Any questions or discussions from the board on that? Okay, so we need a motion to waive the quote and bid process for the needed boiler work. So, I have a motion from Denise and a second from Ed. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Alright.
Just, just to be clear, the school can be heated with one boiler, so that somebody doesn't think that we're, you know, half the building's cold or something like that. We can run it on one boiler, it's just not efficient, and then you're stressing out that one boiler, so we do wanna make sure that we get it fixed.
Do you have a timeline on that repair?
It's gonna be ordering the part, which I think is probably gonna be the bigger delay.
Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah.
All right, our next agenda item is the area meeting that is coming up.
So it's, uh, GBS's turn to host the area meeting and it will be here on October eighteenth at six P M. So we need to make sure that at least one board member is able to attend that night to represent Grantham.
What day of the week is that?
Uh, Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I think I could as well. So as a backup or we both can. Is that one, what time is that one?
Six P M.
That one says six.
Denise and Brittany.
Who is agendaing this year?
Lebanon.
Lebanon is.
Yeah, so when, uh, Dr. Roberts sends me the agenda, I will forward it to the whole board, but then you'll have the agenda coming.
So Lebanon is running them, we're hosting this one. Got it. Okay. All right, our next agenda item is, um, for COVID updates. So we had uh, last month, we had discussed that we would revisit our, what was happening and protocols and all of that stuff to just kind of check in and see where things are. Um, the board got minutes from the last progress monitoring committee meeting. Um, I'm sure Sydney has some updates for us and Kristen might as well, just in terms of like numbers and feedback and that kind of stuff. So.
It's been harder with staff and students, um, which you know is where we tend to get. It's not just the, it's not just staff cases. We have had more staff cases than student cases, but as always, it's hard for us with staffing and coverage and subs, et cetera, et cetera. So I'll let Mrs. Reed speak to that, of course.
Yeah, it's been hard. So, um, not only staff cases, but staff, family members that then the staff has to stay home and take care of their family members, which is what they should be doing. Um, and some staff members who, their staff members that you can't really necessarily get a staff for. So everyone just trying to pick up the pieces and get us through day by day. And I'll tell you, our staff is phenomenal. They are working so hard and so flexible and really doing everything they can to step in to help their colleagues and the kids. So it's really nice, um, but it does get exhausting for people as they pick up other people's pieces and they're you know, spreading anyone. So it is hard. And we do have, we have a great, we have great subs. But never enough.
Um, from the progress monitoring committee meeting, just some, like some big picture stuff that came from that meeting. I think the biggest discussion, what we were going to look at again this month was the test to return policy. Um, that was definitely the biggest conversation that that group had. Uh, and it was definitely a conversation, not a consensus. There was overall just a lot of, um, kind of indecision about it and, um, understanding that the the desire to match our protocols and policies with the CDC guidance, but the realistic aspect being that, you know, we are a small environment with a very tight staff. And so is that still a level of mitigation that we can keep in place? And knowing from the health professionals that were there, that if folks are still testing positive, they are still, um, you know, capable of sharing that with others. Um, and that the, the acknowledging that the CDC policy talks about, um, someone being masked that, at that return, and we have those points of contact during the day that are unavoidable where people are unmasked. So lunch, snack being two big points, and then also recess. So knowing that there are at least three times during the day that that, following that, you know, and some students may choose to mask outside, but it's not required. They are not masked in lunch and snack. Um, and so that it is a little bit of a, not a gray area, but it's a little bit of a different situation in schools where kids do need to eat. Um, and we're not gonna, we can't set up a, a policy just in terms of equity, but also in terms of staffing, we couldn't set up something where like, if people were back, they ate in a different location or something like that. We just don't have the bodies to be able to do that. Um, so there was definitely a lot of conversation about that. There was conversation about is the, the policy or procedure, is it the same for students as it is for staff? Like what, what would that look like? Um, and then, you know, we talked about, the looking, not having reliable data from the state level that we can look at anymore, but maybe focusing more on like our internal data. So what are the numbers right now within the school? Um, and one of those numbers was the number of people that are still doing pool testing, which was great. So there were a hundred at that, there had just been a pool test, right? And there were a hundred and fifty-two people that were in that pool. So it's about half. So it's a pretty good, you know, that's a, that's a, another good measure.
Yep.
So those were some of the big things from that meeting.
Um, I'd be most interested in Karen's, uh, input. I just so trust her, her training and that would be, uh, it's the most important information. Where is she at?
Uh, she's on. Do you want me to ask if she? Let me ask her first.
Before you just promote her.
Yeah. Karen, can you, uh, raise your hand if you want to speak or do you want us to? Do you want to do the chat or would you rather not? We don't want to.
You could also just like leave the meeting.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna bring Karen in. All right, you're on.
So you can hear me but not see me?
Yes, correct.
Thank you, Karen.
Um, my, uh, vote at P M C was to just go with the CDC guidance. I think they're smart people and that's what the guidance is. I, I think having our own little rules just sets us up for complaints and I don't know, problems.
What would that change for you, Karen, going with just CDC?
Uh, that everybody, and it, and it all would also let the students and staff come back at five days if their symptoms were improving and they were feeling up to it. But, uh, it, the only thing that would change is I wouldn't be requiring the COVID test on day five, that on day six through ten, that people, if they're feeling, feeling well enough and fever free and all that, um, could come back with masks in the classroom, um, for days six through ten.
The word has to return.
Symptom dependent.
And we did talk about, in the meeting, we did talk about if families chose to test, like if, if a family still wanted to test at, you know, day five, day six, you know, in that range, and a test came up positive, then they would, yes, yeah.
They can choose to keep them home.
How are we doing with, um, returning people, um, at this point after day five masking? Are we staying masked and?
We are. Most people aren't returning until day ten because their symptoms are.
They're still there.
Heavy.
Yeah.
So it's a lot, lot of lost school. Which is hard on the classes, the teacher and the student.
Any other questions for Karen? We won't make her.
Dinner tonight was pizza.
Thank you. Thanks, Karen.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other discussion about that? Do we want to revisit that? That's, you know, that's the one piece that is different from, uh, CDC policy right now or their, um, recommendations, I should say.
I'm not the one in the building every day. You are. And, and I, I would, I would like your take as well.
I one hundred percent respect what Karen says as a healthcare provider. It does make me feel a little uncomfortable saying that people are going to come back in the building and they're still going to be positive. Even wearing a mask just because they're positive and can be spreading, um, the virus. But if a healthcare provider is saying that that's an okay way to go, then I have to trust them because that's their professional wheelhouse.
Thank you.
I feel like Karen is a very, very, very good sport a month ago. It would be nice to, upon her recommendation to do with the policy to what she suggests.
It's just been so much change without consistencies and so I also.
So to clarify, it's their health, a family's healthcare provider or Karen? Karen's approval, they're ready to come back?
No.
One or the other?
Or they'll, they will just come back. If their symptoms are improving after day five, they can come back, mask from six to ten.
Okay.
Right now, they have to test to come back.
Yeah, okay, I see. We have a problem with that.
Yeah, I also understand Karen's perspective that when we don't follow the CDC guidelines, even when we want to, with all the best intentions and there are good outcomes. I mean, I've been feeling so good about the COVID numbers, even though they haven't a lot of thing. Um, I know it makes just as much, it's like two sides of a coin. It makes, it's a lot of hassle for her justifying things when we're not in step.
Yeah, so do we need a moment to?
Yeah, if, if we want to make a change to that policy, then we would. Is the board in favor of, do we, does it look like we'd like to revisit? That's, that's the discussion I'm hearing. Yeah, okay, so we would need a motion to, um, update our COVID policies to be fully in line with the CDC guidance, including the removal of the test to return. There was like. I second. Okay, so we have a motion from Ed and a second from Leslie. Um, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, all right, thank you guys. Right, and I think, um, you know, and one of the things that we talked about in the, the meeting too, and I think, you know, that this will just be part of like the conversations and the messaging around that is just, you know, making sure that families know they can still, like if their kid isn't well, they need to still stay. It's not everyone returns on day six. It's a symptoms, it's a, you know, and that, that, that's still, there is, there can still be students who are out for eight, nine, ten days. So, yeah. All right, our next agenda item is the budget. So this is looking at our fiscal year twenty-four timeline and then, um, discussing and deciding on if we want to do the public presentation and when we want that to be, to kick things off. So we have a timeline and chart in the board packet outlining the, um, budget timeline here. Any other information on that you want to give us?
Not really. No, I mean, it's pretty straightforward as to the way we go through every year. We've got the public hearing and annual district meeting with snow dates all scheduled. People responsible for each meeting and dates and the different functions. So everything is pretty much business as usual. Um, unless you just want to do, add that public forum and, which I think last time you decided you would want to do via Zoom. Right?
Yeah. Any questions or discussion from the board? Let's look at the timeline first. Is there any, um, any questions or clarifications folks need on, just on, this is our standard timeline.
These are regular board meetings, that's correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, okay, so then let's, um, decide. All right, pressure's on.
Is anyone else going to be?
You guys can come, right? Okay. All right, um, you better be, practice saying that you're going to make a motion and then second.
Will be pretty easy.
All right, um, so let's look at the, do we want to have the budget forum? So we talked last time about wanting to offer that again, um, just kick off the budgeting process, but we talked about maybe delaying it until we had a little bit more information from the town um, about assessments and tax rates and all that good stuff. We have some.
Melissa White has been on vacation until today, um, but have, you would probably know better. Has anyone gotten their test?
Yes.
No, not the bill. Or the rate? Has anybody gotten any?
Not the reassessment.
I don't think we'll, I don't think we'll get a rate. I think we'll just get a bill. It's typically, not usually, like it's, they usually do it December second or third, so sometime beginning of It always seems like a great timing, you know?
Okay, do we, do we want to have the public budget forum with, given all of that, you know? Is that something that we? Last year, we didn't, we remembered, we didn't have anyone come to it.
We were online and had a lovely chat for a while.
If, if the town follows sort of its normal pattern, we're not even by our November first meeting, the chances was actually, I mean, maybe the dosage, you know, maybe we've just gone out.
Maybe.
Maybe, um, maybe outside of, I mean, I guess outside of this timeline, what, what else do we talk about on the forum and open process? Which is like the.
What the process is. How the process works and, you know, people will often ask about some, you know, big factors that might hit our budget or people will sometimes ask about how special education is funded. Those are the usual questions that we get, adequacy questions, public, the bigger picture, state funding.
Those could also come up during a board meeting.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I'm good either way. I, I, I'm not sure I see a huge value in doing it, but especially given, I think the big question will be the rates. And we're going to have a big question mark for that, no matter when we do this.
My thoughts? Anyone that feels strongly that we should have it? All right, do you still have a like a standalone, one of these years, there was like a standalone set of slides. They kind of talked about the budgeting, just kind of generally about the budgeting process.
Yeah.
Is that something that you have?
It's a prezi. I did a prezi presentation about it.
Could it be like on our website? Do you, or is it not enough?
I would just.
Does it need to go along with?
I would just have to narrate it.
Okay.
So if I could, if I could narrate it, then we could put it up.
I think if that's something that's not, that wouldn't be a tremendous additional work for you. I think if it's something that could be, you know, in an hour, something like that, that might be helpful just to have like something to kind of point people towards. Um, if, if someone said, you know, are you having that community, community presentation this year?
Right.
Something that you could just say like, nope, this is standing in its place.
Or if you want to adjust the prezi to make it something you don't have to narrate, if you want to just edit it.
Yeah.
Nope, yeah, like an hour.
I'm trying to think back to see what exactly was in it.
I know.
I don't know if it could not be narrated.
I know.
Because I don't like things to have a lot of text to the, to begin with.
Yeah. Yeah, and that was, I remember because you did that at our last, like, one in Eastman. Two, three years ago now. All right, just something to think about. I don't think we have to, but if there's, if there's an easy way to do that and have that as a resource, just in case anyone's looking for it.
Yeah.
All right, so we will have our, the next budget thing will be, um, at the November meeting then. So we are going to, tonight, we need a motion to approve the budget timeline.
Can I just ask one more question?
Yes, absolutely.
Budget forum is listed in November, December and January.
So that's, that's just what we call each of the sessions we do for the different functions when we split them up.
Yeah, I was thinking of like the. Okay, great.
So it's, and it's those things that are in parentheses.
All right, so, so those of you who are here in November, you get to decide on everything.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the, uh, but the Grantham School District budget timeline.
This will move.
I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, all right, next up on our agenda, we just pulled this up. Um, the board did receive and is acknowledging their receipt of a letter of resignation. Um, the board did receive and is acknowledging their receipt of a letter of resignation. To be effective June thirtieth from Dr. Sydney Leggett. So we are, we've received your letter, so thank you for providing this to the board. Um, and so our job tonight is to accept the resignation effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Of Dr. Leggett, and we would accept it regretfully with tremendous gratitude. And we won't say anything more because we still have lots of months of work to do.
Got a full year ahead.
Yep.
Um, but I just really wanted to make sure that I gave you a lot of notice so that you can really start the search process and have plenty of time to. Do a thorough search because there's a lot of other places in the Upper Valley, especially looking, so I want you to be able to get out of the gate right away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really want to say, no, I don't. But I'm happy for you for another opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept with gratitude and. All of the things to come, um, the resignation effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three of Dr. Sydney Leggett. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, whether or not you are doing it happily or sadly, or with. Gratitude or whatever your feelings might be about it, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, um, and just for folks, you know, and who have joined us, um, we are, the board will be undertaking a process in the coming months. Um, to look at how we'll move forward with our search process, but that will definitely involve. Channels and ways for the community and the public to be involved in that process. Um, and so folks can look forward to more information coming from the board about that, but it will definitely be a process that we. You know, Sydney has given us plenty of time, like she said, in order for us to have a really engaged and full search process at this point, and the board has already. Discussed our desire to have public participation and input in that process, so more information about that will be to come. Definitely by our next school board meeting, so. All right, our next agenda item is uh, the second reading and adoption of policy BEDH.
Right, so last time you had asked me to make sure that you didn't actually have to sit here for thirty minutes, and you don't, so I confirmed. That it's really about providing the opportunity for thirty minutes. So uh, the attorney for the School Board Association said you could actually just keep it to your first public comment period at the beginning. And not have the second one, but if you would like to kind of go more to the spirit of public input, which I imagine the Grantham Board would. You can just keep that second public input in the policy where you basically table the first public input. If anybody would like to speak at the end, you have that opportunity for them, but you don't have to have thirty minutes there. When people are speaking, you can go ahead and adjourn.
And that's all what is in the, the policy that we are looking at.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the language changes that are good.
Yes. Any other comments or questions about policy BEDH? Okay, so we need a motion for the second reading and adoption of BEDH.
One, one quick question. Under the statement of policy number one.
Yes.
Says there will be minimum thirty minutes status, oh, never mind, we're good.
Okay.
Didn't keep reading past the thirty minutes.
All right.
We like to say so.
A motion for the second reading and adoption of BEDH. Second, all right, so I have a motion from Nancy and a second from Leslie. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. All right, next on our agenda is looking at the principals report. Thank you for continuing to give us pictures.
Yeah.
Anything you would like to add or highlight from your report?
So I just would like to do an edit because I wrote an October date to be determined with a Hawk Squad Ball Fest, and as I say here by Brenda. Who is an integral part of the Wellness Committee, it's actually a Wellness Committee Fall Fest, I believe, so I didn't give them the credit they deserve. But other than that, as written.
I will say I'm hearing good things at MTSF from some insider student. Really cool to hear them talk about it out loud. It's really cool.
I'd love to hear what they say.
Yeah.
Do you know, um, and you may not know this, and that's okay, if you don't have the answers to this, in um. The update from Chris, she talked about the Care for Kids program that she attended, and it says that. She said that Turning Points has offered to co-teach the program with her. Is that, who will they be teaching that to? Is that like, is that, do you know, is that like a family program? Is that for other schools?
So my understanding, and I may be misspeaking, so I apologize if I am. So the curriculum she teaches throughout Grantham Village School right now is she was taking bits and pieces of things she likes from different programs and put them together. And this pro, this is one program that encompasses everything, so it'd be school-wide to the kids.
Oh, awesome. Any other questions or comments? I liked having the, the map of the entire lake that they went on and then the picture of all of the kinders.
So I had never seen that map before, and every year since I've been at Grantham Village School, we've had the discussion, how far is it? And since COVID and they had their family. Weekends, I guess, at Coniston, this map has come out, so now we know it's three point two miles.
It's interesting, it looks, it looks like the lake in Eastman, doesn't the shape of it?
Seeing you after that, Brendan. This must have been long.
She wishes she was with the kinders.
There's actually a women's hiking group in Grantham that we're going to be doing the same hike this Friday morning. I have not. I've never seen Lake Coniston.
The trail is slippery. With spikes.
You speak from the.
And stay off the bridges, go around the bridges.
Is that in your heels or?
No. Dressed down for the day.
All right, any other comments for Kristen's report? And then our next agenda item is the superintendent report, anything you would like to highlight or add?
Yes, I usually don't, but I have quite a few things actually. So. First thing I really want to very excitedly share with the board that Meredith Butler, our BA, who had some certification to finish. Uh, that we talked about last year has already done it. So we're just into early October, so she has completed all of her um, her certification requirements and her mini courses through NASBO and everything. Uh, we had told her that we wanted them to be finished by the end of the year, and of course, they're done already, which is also um. Basically the same way that Meredith does all her work in the office too. She's just been incredible, so congratulations to Meredith Butler. We're all really excited, and she's on tonight.
Well done, so we can all say congratulations.
Thank you.
I did want to point out that there's, you will continue to hear a lot and see a lot about the F three oh six, so. What I would love to give you is a draft, and there has not yet been an official draft released, so. As soon as there is one, I will get one out to you and we will share a listening session with Sonafi. To try and look at what those requirements are, but there's a link to the reaching higher summary. One of the things I wanted to ask to see if you have any questions or concerns, or if you're just going to give me the green light, is. Kind of a small playground fundraising project, which is, we were talking about the trees that are going to line the playground, and. Uh, what I would love to do is to have each grade level pre-K through eight. Adopt basically a different type of hardy native New England tree. And have those in order line the perimeter of the building, and then each grade level gets to adopt and learn about their tree, raise the funds for it. And plant it and care for it and learn from it for many, many years. As long as everybody's okay with that.
You could sketch it.
We do have to get some that are um, salt tolerant, that's a big thing.
Did you? I did that, anything that has projectile object. They also, anything that drops fruit, um, because they'll attract bees and wasps. Also, um, anything with thorns, I've reached that one too.
Okay.
I'm just.
Are we, are we left with at least eight options?
You are left, I told her it had to be more than eight, but I would be telling any of, those are my requirements, if they had to, if they get on list. They are not thorny, they do not have projectiles, and they will not attract things that hurt.
Okay. And, and salt tolerant. Kept talking to me about. Um, we are still struggling with custodians, uh, for anybody who's listening for the board, like really, we really need some help getting a custodial staff in. Um, we've been working with a cleaning service, but that's also not a, an ideal or stable solution, to be honest. Because the cleaning services are having trouble getting their own staffing, so anything that we can do to try and help get some. Custodial help and help will be appreciated. We did get our GMR this week, which is higher than usual for Grantham. Which is what our health trust is telling us is what they're seeing across the board, but our GMR this year is nine point one percent. We were told that everything is higher than usual. What they're seeing is that a lot of people during the pandemic just didn't go to the doctor, and now a lot of people are going to the doctor, so when you're looking at claims, things are. Starting to increase. At the same time, they told us that we should feel really happy about nine point one. Because some of the other districts are seeing a much, much higher increase. So that will have a, an impact on our, our budget, obviously. And then the other thing, speaking of budget, is, um, as you know, I've had the opportunity to, to be a leader for three local districts. And I just want to throw a thought out there before the budget process, so you can let it marinate in your minds a little bit. But um, one area that I've seen where I think that the districts can share and provide a lot of support to these single district principals. Is the idea of a curriculum coordinator, um, and none of the three small schools have one. And we haven't talked a lot about sharing with some of these other small schools, and I think that might be a really nice place to start, so. You will start to hear more about proposals to bring in that kind of a shared position with Plainfield and Cornish.
Is that feasible for one person with three?
It is, yeah, so if you look at a big district like this, it wouldn't be on, it wouldn't be unusual for a big district with like three elementary schools to have. An elementary curriculum coordinator. So I'm just putting that out there as, as food for thought. And that is it for me.
Thank you. I've had some prickly scares on my drives lately where I think it's a.
Did you see the picture?
Is it in here?
There is a, there's a.
It's not in here.
The picture isn't in here now. Did the picture go home now? It really did look like.
Oh, I've had a couple legit that I, that really resonated for me, is what I'm saying.
The actual ones or piles of dirt?
Real ones.
Yeah, no, they're all over the place.
Did the picture of the handprints go home at all?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was great, so that's our youngest and our oldest current GBS kid. With our handprints in the. I never thought a slab of concrete could bring tears to my eyes, but.
That's very sweet.
For many reasons.
Um, any other questions for Sydney? Um, I wanted to just give her, you may not have seen it, because I think it came out late today, but the. Um, School Board Association did send out the results from the delegate assembly, um, and so they, they. Passed or voted to support four of the resolutions that been brought forward, so these are items that will be. That the School Board Association will make advocacy towards, so if there are bills being proposed on these issues. This is the position that the members of the School Board Association have asked them to take on it. And I thought, and if, a couple of them, I think are things that folks might be interested in knowing about. One of them is to allow committees, subcommittees and advisor committees to hold meetings that don't have a quorum physically present. So that they, as long as the, they, they don't have to have a quorum physically present in a room together, they could be. Virtual, they could do other, you know, call in, that kind of stuff for um, committee, subcommittees and advisory committees. Have the state and federal government seek and provide viable, sustainable, permanent funding to provide school breakfast and lunch at no cost to students. So looking at um, you know, universals lunch programs. Um, and then supporting public school approval standards that encompass holistic and comprehensive academic subject areas, including English, language arts and reading. Mathematics, science, social studies to include civics, government, economics, geography, history, and Holocaust and genocide education, arts education. To include music and visual arts, world languages, health and wellness education, physical education, engineering and technologies. Including technology applications, computer science and digital literacy, and personal finance literacy. So thinking about those standards coming forwards. You know, that, that's the position that the membership has asked the School Board Association to take. In any advocacy or, or testimony that they might do during that process. And then the last one is the New Hampshire School Board Association will advocate for legislative action that ensures. Local school boards comply with federal firearm laws and policies, so those were the four of the eight that moved forward, so. Um, and there's like a full rundown of that meeting, um, that was sent out by the School Board Association. Right, um, our next agenda item is the consent agenda, and. Are we adding the trustee report to this consent agenda, since you sent it out?
Yes.
Okay.
Already, I sent you all a new agenda as well.
Oh, right, right, right.
On the website too.
Yeah, so the agenda, let me pull that, because I have the other one, okay. Okay. Anything to discuss or poll or look at in more detail from the consent agenda? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. A motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, and do we have a non-public tonight?
Yeah, we are going under two different um, RSAs. You ready Denise?
I'm ready.
RSA ninety-one, eight, three, two, E. And RSA ninety-one, eight, three, two, I.
Right, so um, are we going to be doing any votes or anything when we come back from non-public?
Uh, you will be voting in non-public.
Okay, yeah, okay.
But you, you don't have to do any.
Okay, so um, what we will do, thank you to folks that have joined us in person and virtually. We are going to um, move into our non-public session. Because when we return from non-public, we're just going to be adjourning the meeting, we are going to close the um, Zoom link tonight. And after we take our vote to enter non-public, um, we'll close the Zoom link, we won't reopen it because we're not doing anything interesting, I promise, we're just going to adjourn the meeting. And our next meeting is November first, so put that on your calendar now to join us then. Thank you to folks who joined us, and we need a motion from the board to enter non-public under RSA ninety-one, eight, three, two, E. And ninety-one, eight, three, two, I. I have a motion from Ed and a second from Leslie, and we need a roll call for this, so Denise.
I.
Ed.
I.
Leslie.
I.
Nancy.
I.
Brittany.
I.
All right, so we are going to enter non-public.